Kobe Haley, right.
All right.
What here?
Good evening, this is the August 8th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up, we have an adjournment, appeal number 2019-005. Christopher and Kristen Donnelly have asked for an adjournment to August 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. We have a reserved decision, Mr. DeLuca, you want to step? So the only changes from last year's site plan?
It's basically, they just added a piece of property on and put the same impervious area, same as, same as last year.
Okay. You want to read the decision?
I like her voice better anyway.
Reserve decision for Mary Ellen Real Estate LLC, Riverhead Dodge, 1716 Old Country Road, Riverhead, tax map number 600-1011-10.21, formerly 600-1011-10.2 and part of 6.3. B.C. and DRC zoning for variances under relief from chapter 301, section 93, with a proposed impervious surface of 79.03 percent of the lot area and the maximum permitted is 75 percent.
Okay, you will hear a second.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you very much.
Take good care. Okay, young lady, you're on.
Appeal number 2019-026-1315 West Main LLC, 1315 West Main Street, Riverhead, tax map number 600-119-238, RFC zoning for an interpretation of chapter 301, section 164(c), probuilding for firearm testing/sighting is not customarily accessory to pre-existing non-conforming retail use.
Mr. Cuddy.
Good evening.
You have the floor.
When we were here last time, I wanted to make clear, and maybe we didn't, so I'll try again, that what we're doing is we're interpreting the code and we believe that we're river-related. And the, all of the information that you have says we're a pre-existing non-conforming use. We believe that's not true. We're river-related, the DEC has indicated in its stamp plan that we're river-related. We have fishing, we have hunting, and we have boating as part of our place on the river, which is in West Main Street and the iconic river. So it's our position that we meet the requirements of river-related retail use, which is 301-164-a2 of the town code. And when we get to that point, we're asking you to do one other thing. We believe that the gun container that we're talking about is an accessory use. We believe that because gun stores have accessory gun ranges, which are much greater than gun containers. The gun container is a two-person entity that is supervised by one other person, which is an employee and supervisor of this site. And in that gun container, they use it because he services pistols and other estate-type sale guns, and they need to know if they work. And so for him, this is an absolute accessory that he needs to have at his site. He also can train people so that they shoot properly, and that's another certainly very important element. And so what we're going to do is to propose that we have a 10-foot by 50-foot gun container, which has rubber plastic in it, excuse me, rubber ballistic in it. And that takes care of all the bullets. They don't go anyplace, they stay inside. And it's used only during working hours, so we're talking 10 to 6. It's locked, it stays locked, except when the supervisor comes out to show people how to use their firearms.
And there are no clubs or anything along that line?
It's not, thank you, it's not public. It's only used by the people that are there.
And there's no storage of guns in the way?
There is no storage of guns in there. The gun sales are all inside the store. And the store basically is for hunting. And of course, the river is a place where people hunt ducks and fish. And that's why I'm saying we're river-related and this is an accessory use. I have Mr. Sandeluski here, who is also a, an architect and who has done some site planning at this site, and he would like to explain a little bit of the history of it and also the operation of the gun container.
Okay, before he comes up, I know this young lady over here would like to get up and say a few things and maybe Mrs. Sandeluski can add on to that, so.
Okay.
We'll take, we'll take this lady up first. I called on, yes. Okay. So you're the neighbor across the street, if I'm not mistaken?
I am, sir.
And your name again?
My name, sir, is Ruth Pollak. I, first of all, I just wanted to start by saying that I did request an adjournment of tonight's hearing from Mr. Cuddy this afternoon because I have so much to review in terms of documents that I foiled, that I can't really be properly prepared to go forward, except to a certain extent, in all fairness. He has not gotten back to me today with a consent adjournment. I called him this afternoon about, no, about 3:00. And, and his, his secretary said he stepped away from his desk. And he hasn't consented or, one way or the other. So that was my first request, was to adjourn this hearing so that I and others can actually review the documentation that I have made copies of. When I made copies today at the building department, there are a number of things that are not there. Many things that were supplied to the DEC for the permit to which Mr. Cuddy is referring are not there. So it's impossible, just that alone, for me to know what was submitted. What did the DEC actually see? What were they aware of? It, it talks about a 10-by-50-foot slab of concrete. It does not talk about a metal container, which would be a three-dimensional 10-by, I assume, 10-by-50-by-10 feet in, in size. It's not even referred to on there in any way, so I would like to see what the DEC had submitted to it before it gave them a permit. And what is the permit even for? It doesn't say. So that's one of the things that I think should be researched for this board to properly decide, and for me, as a neighbor who will be affected by this, to, to go on. Now, I could, I have other information that I would like to discuss. I don't know whether you'd like to hear it now or whether you'd like to hear it later.
No, we're all ears.
Let's reach for a second.
I think, I think the application before the board is for an interpretation of the use as a river-related use.
I understand that.
So those comments should be addressed toward that.
I understand that.
Application.
All right, and I will address that right now. And also, I'd like-
If it related to DEC would be a DEC question, not a zoning board question?
Understood, understood. Well, first of all, again, with all due respect, I did go to the site. I did look at the site myself. I did notice that while Mr. Cuddy talks about hunting ducks and fowl, and that's in the application, that there are semi-automatic weapons within the shop. I don't know how you, I think I said last time, I have hunted. I have friends who hunt, both, you know, the arrows, the guns and so forth. I cannot understand how anyone, any neighbor, any person of common sense could ever say it makes sense, or I would expect that a store that used to forever be a bait store for fishing could now have not only hunting rifles and pistols, which can literally shoot through a wall, like this wall in front of me, and then semi-automatic weapons, is that is something that fits into our neighborhood? Our neighborhood is not, is a neighborhood. It is, it is families. We have people walking by, people on bicycles, people living by, children living by. I live across the street. And then we have, so that's the number one thing, is the type of, of weapon that somehow, without notice to us, was, was allowed into this particular facility. Number two, if we look at interpretation, normally, historically, an accessory use, which is the word that we're looking at here, an accessory use means something less than or accessory to a larger thing. I do not understand how an accessory use can be interpreted as a, a store that has, that has been a bait store, and I remember this store myself personally, and, and a bait store can now say, oh, now we want to sell all kinds of weapons, and we also want to bring those weapons from the store out to a box on our land and have people test those weapons on a box on land in a neighborhood. I mean, it's a reach. So I'm opposing this from the standpoint of, if you want, you know, for, for many reasons, but for one of them is, this is not a pre-existing, this has never been used as a hunting or a gun sales place. This is the first time.
But Miss Pollak, the existing zoning permits river-related uses. So it, we're, their application is that it is not a pre-existing non-conforming use, rather it's actually a permitted use in the zoning. And I just have one question in terms of-
I'm not sure where you're seeing that, but please go-
That's their application. They're asking for an interpretation that these are river-related uses. It's not, they're not asking the board to decide whether it's a pre-existing non-conforming. Just question, if they had a, an archery range on the property, would you have the same objection?
I probably would. But, but again, we're talking, archery can be defined as major hunting archery equipment, which my friends have used, or it can be used as children's archery or the high school archery. I mean, what, what do we, how are we defining archery? And then the other issue-
For hunting purposes.
Okay, so whatever we use for hunting in, in the modern world. I would object to that too, because if someone is testing that type of equipment next to, in a neighborhood, and once a, an arrow or a, a bullet leaves that weapon, you cannot bring it back. It's too late. So I, I said last time, I am a Second Amendment constitutional person, I totally understand that, and, and I'm saying that for the purpose of anyone who is a gun owner. But at the same time, this is a dangerous instrumentality. It's never been there before. And not to mention, they have said to me that the decibel sound within the chamber, the proposed metal chamber, is not going to exceed, say, 65 decibels. We don't know that. That's what they're saying to us, but we don't know how loud it's going to be. And 65 decibels could be me standing next to the LIE and a truck going by. I mean, that can be very loud. So that's a thing that we don't really know at this point, because they haven't tested it, they haven't proven it, they're just claiming it. So we have a sound issue, and that also alters the neighborhood. In their application, they, they indicated that this is a, a commercial use area. It is not just a commercial use area, it's a residential area. They did not check that off. I am not being, you know, nitpicking here. I went through every single thing they did, I went through all of their applications, I spent time with them, I looked at the store, I looked at the area, and under the code, if you are talking about an accessory use to what is there already, how is the testing of a weapon, any weapon, whether it's a handgun, a type of archery, or a semi-automatic weapon, which now they seem to want to do for fowl, I don't understand that, but okay, how is that an accessory use to the riverfront? It doesn't seem to make any sense to me at all, and I have a very open mind. I've lived here my whole life, you know, with the exception of times that I've been away at grad school. I, I just don't, it, it doesn't make sense to me that, like, anyone living in the area would say, well, yeah, this store just moved into town, it's kind of like Edwards used to be, except they want to test the stuff outside of the store.
But would you agree that hunting and fishing are river-related uses?
Hunting and fishing, it, hunting is difficult to say, because I have never seen a hunter on the river. I have seen, people used to fish in the river, and they probably still do. But from the standpoint of hunting, I think it's a stretch to say that hunting and fishing are river, fishing is, but hunting is not necessarily the way they have defined it and expanded it, a river-related use. It's a dangerous instrumentality, which, once we allow it into our town, we are now opening the door to other things. Example, I happen to love examples. Splish Splash started out as a place for people to have fun. Once an alcohol license was granted, now they have problems. Now they have the police, now they have things they never had before. And, these are somewhat different things, but the point that I'm trying to make here is that once you start out with one thing, as, as these folks did, it's always going to be something else. And before you know it, what is now a safe neighborhood, and I thank the police for that, and I thank the town for that, is not going to be safe anymore. You cannot have a break-in. You cannot have a fire. You can't have a theft, because if any of those things happen, it'll be too late. And we have schools here, we have three schools in Riverhead. What are we going to say to the, to the parents of, of the children who live in this town, who go to school, that it's a safe area if we have a gun store in a residential neighborhood, not even a, a truly commercial like Route 58 area? What are we going to say to them? Oh, guess what? Not only do they sell guns, but you can go test them there. We, they still have the Calvertin range. Is it more inconvenient for them to go to the Calvertin range? Eh, it's around the corner. But that's what they should have planned when they purchased this property. When you purchase property, you plan. And I said that last time. An entrepreneur purchases property and plans. They don't just say, gee, I just woke up this morning and decided, let's just test out guns. Let's, and not only that, let's bring all these semi-automatic weapons into the store as well, and those can be tested in this box. How do I know as a neighbor, or how does this honorable board know as, as, and you, how do you know that any of the weapons in that store are going to test properly in that box? We do not know, because we have not been provided with the proof. And for these reasons and others, but specifically these, I am saying that this should be, this concept should be tabled for about 30 days, so that it can be researched properly, and the, the sound issue and the danger issue and getting the guns to the box can be properly evaluated before we, we let this go.
But if the, the sound issue and the danger issue would really be issues for the planning board on a site plan application, the sole issue before this board is whether that use is a river-related use.
I don't see it as a river, how is it a river-related?
That's your, that's your argument.
Yeah, it is not.
I'm not suggesting you're wrong or right, I'm just suggesting that-
I'm saying-
The issue is relating to the use of the property and the distances from the, where things go and whether the sound, the, the planning board would request information on the sound conformance to the, to the, to the sound code, the noise code, the town's noise code, and other things like that. Those are not issues before this board. I just want to make sure you, you're clear about that.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to go back and, and say, because I, I appreciate what you've said once again. You are here to interpret the concept of accessory to and river-related activity. I cannot see how a reasonable person standard, forget about me, a reasonable person could think that a gun shop that tests its weapons outdoors of the shop is a river-related activity. It's a stretch, because it's never historically been used that way. And nothing in the town code, and I have read through the entire town code, even if you look up the word weapon throughout the town, town code, and you find the naval base, for example, many things were done before the naval base was dismantled because of its effect on the people around the naval base. So now you're introducing a weapon into the equation of defining what is a necessary use to the river. This river has, has, people have hunted around Long Island, but to say that the river is a hunting ground, where's the proof?
There's a duck blind right off of the seventh hole at Indian Island.
I have golfed there, and I think I hit it once with the ball.
Then you were out of bounds.
I was out of bounds. But, however, however, if you saw, if you were golfing there and you saw someone with an, with a, an semi-automatic weapon hunting ducks, wouldn't you be a bit alarmed? I would. And I, I'm wondering, like, doesn't anybody see that the boundary lines are being crossed repeatedly in this town by these folks? I mean, I care about my town. So, you know, yeah, I've seen duck blinds too, but who knows how long they've been there? Who knows who uses them? And I have nothing against duck hunting, but the way it's being introduced into this particular location, which is just a, it's a residential area that's been, I mean, look, we had a food that was, we've had restaurants there in the past. We have had attorneys, Sax Dean, my family used to use lawyer Sax Dean, his place is, is there. That's a commercial use. It's had many commercial uses, but when you start adding something that's dangerous instrumentality to the use and say that it's a, it's an accessory to the use of the river, I believe, with all due respect, you're adding a very dangerous thing to the mix. And it's a stretch for anyone to say, well, that's okay, because you know what? A year from now, if this is approved, I'm predicting, if this is approved, that they'll be back and they'll say, guess what? We have, we want to try grenades now. Or we want to try some other thing.
Stop, 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 stop.
No, I mean-
You're way over the top now.
Well, they're way over the top.
Grenades, please.
Well, when I saw the AK-whatevers, I was a bit shocked.
Okay. Let's hear it from Mr. Sandeluski now.
And finally-
Yes, certainly.
He doesn't live here, I do.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Cuddy.
I just want to set the record straight, and I'm sorry that people have to listen to all this, but when we were here last time, you asked Ms. Pollak to contact me. She contacted me two days ago. Not, she had 14 days, she waited right to the end. We met her yesterday. Mr. Newman, who's here, the principal, sat down with her at a table, and we spent time with her, we asked her if she had any questions. We explained in detail to her what the gun container does. She had no questions. She wanted to process it a little bit. She's gone to the neighbors, the neighbors that are next to us have given letters consenting to this. I have another one from a second neighbor. Neighbors to the right, which is the west, to the left, which is the east, have all consented to it. She does not live across the street, she lives 200 feet to the west. In back of her house are the train tracks. In front of her house is 25. She's worried about noise, it's hard to believe that she really is, because noise is there all the time. We've given you, by the way, a noise statement from the manufacturer of this unit, which shows that it meets the right decibels. It's hard to believe that what she's saying is really credible. We do not sell type of guns she's talking about. We sell hunting rifles, we sell fishing gear, and that's what we do. And we believe that we're river-related, and we believe that the use will be helpful to people who are buying guns and also who want gun service. And that's what we're talking about.
So there are no AK-47s, no M16s?
There are no AK, and in fact, you can't buy in this, in this state assault rifles, and that's what she's talking about. You just can't do that.
Excuse me, I went over the permit, and I looked at the DEC's language, of course, they're usually very vague, but on the, on the survey, it mentions that there's a proposed 50-by-10 metal container of range.
That's right.
And it's stamped by the DEC.
Correct.
So that's pretty evident that they know about that range.
Yes.
They don't know.
It's not specific, sir. It doesn't say anything about what's meant by-
Hold on now, we're not going to be shouting across the room. You can go back again.
I was trying to point out to their attorney that I'm looking at the permit and I'm seeing on the survey that they are, it's depicted right on the survey, and you said you only saw a concrete pit? I think it's more than that. That's all, this is saying. I'm just pointing it out.
Okay, Mr. Cuddy.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
It puzzles me somewhat that we're having a request for an adjournment when there were two weeks to do some of this. The first time that she came was yesterday, and she could have come anytime she wanted, she could have looked at records anytime she wanted, and now she's talking about DEC records, which of course are the DEC. I don't understand, this is very plain as to what we're doing. She sat with us for half an hour, we showed her exactly what the container is, exactly what it does, how it operates. I don't know that you can do any more than that. I think when somebody has a visceral reaction to not liking something, they make up things. And I think a great deal of what she has just said is made up to just try and delay it and defeat it. I don't see any purpose to it. I don't think extending the hearing is going to change anything. And that's why I wanted Mr. Sandeluski to talk, if she wants to speak again, she can, but I'm disturbed-
Just one more question.
She would ask for a delay.
Mr. Cuddy?
Yeah.
Is the range going to be out into the public?
No. It absolutely is not.
It's only going to be up to the people that handle the guns?
Yes, the people who buy the guns and the people who are getting the gun service.
Will they have, or do they have a permit from Suffolk County Sheriff's Department to operate?
Yes, they do.
Will they sanction that range?
Yes. This is something that the, he has a gunsmith, he uses it, he has a gunsmith license.
Right.
He has a sales license. He has licenses from the state of New York and the county of Suffolk.
AFT?
Yes, and he has all of those permits.
Okay, I was just asking.
I would, I have, and I have given you up before, but I would like to add a couple of things to the record. I have an affidavit from Mr. Sandeluski, and I also have a neighbor, who is the second neighbor to the east, consenting to the use of the gun container. So I'd like to hand those up if I may.
Please, Mr. Cuddy. Mr. Sandeluski, if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell truth, not to mention a two-self guy.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Martin Sandleski, architect, 215 Rowan Oak Avenue. I have some information that I think will help clear up a lot. I'd like to pass this up to the board.
Please.
Follow him when I do the presentation, please. There's a total of seven copies there. I'm the architect for Bates and Barrels. I have been for many years. We are here, as stated, for, not for a variance, not for relief. We are here for two interpretations, one as to the, the business being a river-related retail use and the other being that the container is accessory there too. being that the, uh, container is accessory there too. Historically, you had gotten a, a letter recently from Mr. Murphy, from the town, uh, from the planning department, sort of highlighting the history. I was involved with the history of the project all the way through and I'd like to, you know, clear up some items. My client, when he first came by, as you can see on page one, he was looking to open up this type of a business, a hunt, that relates to hunting and fishing. He's a sportsman, wanted to open that up, a location. He drove by Fisherman's Deli, this is the original sign, uh, seeing that it was a river-related business and it was for sale. At that time, seeing that it was a perfect location for what he wanted to do, he reached out to myself. And what we did was we then confirmed by zoning and by DEC requirements that the use is a river-related retail use. And I checked the zoning code, uh, 3011642, under permitted uses, and it does say that it is a permitted use as a river-related retail use, as well as accessory uses. That would be on page two. Mr. Murphy's letter referred to the permit process. We started the permit process after we confirmed that this was river-related retail and we obtained a building permit, which is page three, and I specifically highlight, um, that it notes that the use identified conforms to the Riverhead Town Code. Have I, I've highlighted that on page three. Subsequent to that, on page four, uh, we received a certificate of compliance. Again, I note, uh, highlighted the area that says conforms to all of the applicable provisions of law. On page five, I have a copy, now you already have a copy of this previously, this is the, the letter that Mr. Hammond wrote on October 2018. Uh, I highlighted two things in here. One is, uh, where it says, is in compliance with town code? And Leroy, I think this sort of goes to, uh, what you had questioned before. If you, I also highlight on the bottom that it's carbon copied to the Suffolk County Sheriff. That was dated October 12th of 18. Page six is the, um, state of New York gunsmith license, uh, that is held by my client. It is dated December of 18, two months after we got that letter, and it was signed by the Suffolk County Sheriff. That's a requirement. In fact, the letter that Mr. Hammond wrote was requested because it is required by the Suffolk County Sheriff in order to issue a gunsmith license for this location. They cannot issue a license for this location unless it is a permitted use. So Mr. Hammond's letter, the intent of the letter, was to confirm that this was a river-related retail use and a permitted use. With that, there is a section on page three of Mr. Murphy's letter to the zoning board, his evaluation, where he talks, uh, with reference to the uses, uh, which he referred to in the denial letter. Uh, and in the denial letter, they said it was a non-conforming pre-existing use and the accessory was not an accessory use. There are a couple of issues with the, uh, with, with what Mr. Murphy had indicated in the letter. First of all, which I didn't include a copy, but I know you have it already, uh, it was certainly confirmed by the certification letter and the DEC permit that shows the uses on the property that is river-related. Also, there's a big conflict in Mr. Murphy's correspondence and one that this board will have a very firm grasp upon. And that is, um, what he notes in paragraph two. He says that the existing business was allowed to occupy the same space as the deli as both uses are considered to be retail. That statement cannot be accurate and cannot be true unless the building was considered river-related retail. The purpose for that is that if it was considered a non-conforming use and they did this work, that would require, under section 30122B, he would have been required to obtain from this board, from the zoning board of appeals. A non-conforming use on the same lot held in single and separate ownership may be changed to another non-conforming use when approved as a special exception by the zoning board of appeals. Under, uh, chapter 105.8. Chapter 105.8 refers to granting special exemptions and special permits for any of the uses for which chapter 301 requires obtaining such exemption. I have a copy of the code sections if you want it. I did make extra copies for the record. So therefore, this was not a change from one non-conforming use to another. It could not be. If it was, we would have been required to get a special exemption from this board in order to proceed with the application at that time. So historically, through the application, this premises, the previous use and the current use were and always have been considered, uh, river-related retail uses and are permitted as a permitted use in a commercial zone. The zoning and the zoning chart for this property is under the commercial, commercial district regulations. When you look at the tables, there's a residential table and a commercial table. This is under the commercial section and it is a river-related retail use. It could not be without having, if it wasn't, we would have required that exception all along the way. I think this is where Mr. Murphy misinterpreted things and I think his misinterpretation is also represented in his reference to the container where he says that the, uh, the proposed shooting range would be open to the public. That also is absolutely not correct. It never was presented that way. Uh, if you've ever been to a public range, they're very large, there are multiple areas where people come in and they pay a fee, they fill out a form, they have to have their license and they go in and they can practice and utilize a range. Uh, that is not what this is.
Just a quick question, Mr. Sandeluski. The letter that you have as exhibit number five in the package that you just gave us, dated October 12th, 2018, wherein Mr. Hammond makes his zoning determination based on the, uh, zoning permit and the CO dated August 16th, 2016, and indicates that it's in compliance with town code and which specific use allows for the retail of firearms, ammunition and accessory products in accordance with applicable state and federal regulations. That letter was never appealed by anyone?
No, it was not.
That zoning determination was never appealed by anyone to the zoning board of appeals?
No, it was not. Matter of fact, it also went to Mr. Murphy at the planning department, uh, as well as the sheriff. When this changed was when I came to, uh, the, uh, pre-submission meeting for the site plan in order to install the concrete slab for the, uh, for the container. I think maybe the, this may clear up something else, I think the, the site plan that, uh, lady was referring to was my site plan, which actually shows basically the slab. The, the site plan is for the slab and the container goes on the slab in accordance with the DEC permit. We never submitted that application because when we went to the pre-submission, that's when the mis, misinterpretation came about as far as the, this not being a river-related retail use and the accessory use. As to the accessory use, on page six, I'm sorry, page seven, uh, what I have here, these are just some pictures of, uh, both a rifle, a rifle and a handgun, uh, in, uh, their setup for zeroing in and sighting. What makes this an accessory use to a, uh, business that sells firearms? Firearms have to have their sites inspected, they have to zero in, they add scopes, uh, they mount risers and scopes to rifles and to handguns, uh, they have to adjust them, they have to replace triggers at times, uh, adjust the pull adjustment on triggers and they do servicing of firearms also. So that is something that is essential to my client's business and accessory to the sale of firearms. Also, on page eight, what you see here, this is actually a page that is a sample of a gun test. This is a certification. This is what a gunsmith will do. They will set up the gun in, in the, uh, you know, the setup that, on the bench test that I showed on the previous photograph, and then they can zero it in and shoot it and then certify that the, the sites are properly zeroed in so that you literally, what you see on the target is what you're going to hit. Some of the things that are essential here is that there are a lot of estate sales, people pass away, they have a collection of firearms. My client purchases those firearms for resale. In order to do so, they must test them, uh, they must diagnose any issues, including malfunctions, uh, jams, uh, ejection issues with regard to spent casings. Uh, they have to do a good valuation of the, uh, of the firearms, uh, check the ammunition magazine, uh, and the magazine feeding mechanism, uh, and then they have to repair them with any repairs and do again the bench test before they can then resell. Also, with regard to the sale of firearms, um, all customers and people, individuals have different, uh, requirements for their own firearm. Uh, it can have to do with the operation of a slide, it could have to do with the grip, the, the width of the handle, um, it could have to do with the sighting, when you sight a target. These are all things, it's like, I, I mean, it's almost like trying on a pair of shoes before you buy it. You really need to know that it's the right fit. Um, so that, therefore, that is something that in terms of the sale of firearms, uh, that allows them to narrow down a selection of various pieces and have the potential, uh, purchaser then try them to make sure they're getting the right, uh, item. And then as Mr. Cuddy had, uh, also indicated, that with the licensing that, um, uh, my client has, they do also, uh, show people how, train people how to use all of the different firearms because there are many different types with many, many different mechanisms, et cetera. Uh, so that is how the, uh, container is certainly accessory to the gun sales. I, I think there's, to me, it's no question, you're going to sell guns, you can't shoot them, you know, into a barrel of water like they did, you know, 80 years ago. As to the container, on page nine, uh, I have a copy of the, uh, table one for the permissible DBA level in the town of Riverhead. From a commercial or public land, and again, this is a commercial land, to a residential use, the DB rating at the time that this would function is 65. That is, uh, right from the town code. Page 10 is a letter from Shooting Range Industries that indicates that based on their testing, they have a DB, uh, level at the desired 65 at 50 feet. We are 50 feet from the sidelines. Each of these containers is not purchased off the shelf. Every one of them is custom-made to order. So if you have even higher decibel ratings, they can be achieved through additional cost and additional, you know, insulation and sound attenuation, they can achieve those decibel levels. So there is no sound issue with regard to this container, uh, that would exceed any town code limit. Uh, page 11, also from Shooting Range Industries, uh, I highlighted two items on here. One is the HEPA filter, that environmentally, these ranges are enclosed, uh, they have a filtration system so that when firearms are discharged, uh, any of the fumes, vapors, uh, dust, et cetera, from, or, you know, shards from, uh, rounds hitting, uh, the back of the, of the container, those are all filtered through a HEPA filter and there is absolutely no discharge from the container that causes any environmental concerns. And also, I highlighted, uh, that they are designed for, quote, "a zero surface danger zone." These containers are the safest place, the safest place that you could discharge a firearm is when you are enclosed in this container without any exception. It is the safest place that you can discharge any firearm. Uh, that is what the, the company sells, that is their business. The last page, which is a fold-out page, I just included a sample of the, the range. You can clearly see, uh, on the top of the picture, you see the plan view, it's two locations. Now going back to the bench test, setting up a long gun bench test on one side and a handgun bench test on the other side. You have testing to do, you go out, you can have all these things set up to where you're testing. When you have a sale and you're looking at, uh, bringing a client out, a customer, you go out every time with an instructor, this is not open to the public, you try different firearms, uh, decide on the one you're liking as you're going to go through a purchase, uh, as well as any training, they would do the training right there in, in the, uh, container also. It's set up so that it's safe in the back, it collects all of the, uh, the rounds, so the rounds are shot. It has, is designed so it takes the energy out of them, they go into a tube, they spin, they drop in a five-gallon bucket, and then they have a, a vendor who comes who recycles the lead and metals. They take the bucket, they seal it, they bring it out, they put a new bucket in, so the whole time that it's in use, everything is, uh, kept and recycled. So I would, uh, like to think that this clears up a lot of matters, um, that have been raised with regard to the, uh, the use as a river-related retail use, as the accessory use, as it applies to my client's business and also gives you the information that I think you need to know with regard to the, to the container itself.
Have you or could you provide a copy for Ms. Pollak of this packet? So that she can review it?
Right here.
Okay.
Could you give it to her?
Ms. Pollak, would you go up to the, uh-
May I keep her screen?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Just pull that microphone down a little bit, thank you.
I'm short like my mom. Um, I just wanted to say a couple of things tonight for now. I have not yet had an opportunity to review the latest material and do appreciate it. Mr. Cuddy, with all due respect to you, I was there. I am under oath, right now. We are all under oath right now. I saw the entire river, river wall, riverfront wall of the shop with semi-automatic weapons.
What semi-automatic weapons are we talking about?
I, I was-
Are there M16s there? Mr. Cuddy testified there were no M16s, there's no AK-47s.
I can't tell you the names of them because I was not, I couldn't walk back there and look at them, but I can tell you, they're on their website as we speak. They're the kind that have, they're war weapons. They're the kinds that have, they're like machine guns. We're not talking about rifles. I am not making this up. I am under oath. I can't name the numbers of them. I, you know, I could look them up and make something up, I won't do that.
Mr. Cuddy, you have the owner here?
That's number one. I just wanted you to know, I'm not making that up. I was not here sooner, I did not contact Mr. Cuddy sooner because my father passed away this month.
Oh, I'm sorry for your troubles.
And I was involved and thank you. And, and we have been involved in his funeral as of all of last week. So my father passed away. That is the only reason that when I saw this letter, I couldn't do anything more than I was doing, I was involved with that. His burial at, uh, at the VA Cemetery and all of the arrangements that go along with that. So, and I'm not seeking any, uh, any, um, I mean, I appreciate what you say, but I'm not seeking sympathy. I'm just stating a fact. So that's number two, as far as why I didn't approach him sooner, I just couldn't, I had no time.
Okay.
All right? But, um, I would have, um, because I, I have been, um, ever since I learned about this, um, I've been terribly concerned about it. Now, the, just to get to the point really quickly, um, apart from, I am telling you that the weapons in there are, you know, they're monstrously huge, um, and I'm not exaggerating. Um, the, the other thing I wanted to add is, I don't know who the vendors are who are going to recycle this, they're not named. That is the least of my worries. But I am also concerned about, there's a memo that was in the file from Mr. McLaughlin, dated July 25th, 2019, in which on page three, um, he refers to, uh, fourth paragraph down, it starts with, "Based on the information submitted by the applicant, the proposed shooting range would be open to the public who are not purchasing a gun."
No, 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 no. That's not from me.
Well, I, I mean, it just says, it says, I beg your pardon, it says, "To Fred McLaughlin, from-"
Right, but he was wrong, as they have stated.
I don't know-
It's not open to the public.
Well, the- Well, the public can come in to buy guns there and the, and the public can go in and test them. So that is the public part. That's my point, okay? I'm not, you know, I'm not here to argue with anyone.
There's no gun clubs or anything going in there, that's what we're saying.
Well, anybody can go in there. If I wanted to go in there and I said, "I have a license and I want to, or I want to buy one of your guns and I want to test..."
Well, that's, that's, that's how you sell things.
It is, but this is not the place for such, such a...
Let's find out what kind of weaponry they have there.
Right, but I'm really, I'm really curious to see what he has to say, and, and finally, the permitted uses in three oh one, one sixty-four do not, in my, in my humble opinion, include a store of this magnitude. Thank you.
And if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so thank God. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Thomas Newman. I live at sixty Josie Court in Riverhead, New York. Business is located at thirteen fifteen West Main Street, known as Bates &amp; Barrows.
All right, so, my question is, what weaponry are you selling there? Do you have M-16s, do you have AK-47s?
No, M-16s, no, they're, they're fully auto. If I could clarify, just as far as, as far as like the automatic, you know, obviously the media, I think Ms. Pollak has been, listened to a lot of media lately, there has been a, the SAFE Act has been in effect for many years now, two thousand and thirteen. A civilian cannot purchase an AR-15, just a civilian version of an M-16, cannot purchase an assault weapon. Assault weapons are very, very clearly defined. They cannot have more than ten rounds, they can't have a detachable magazine and a collapsible stock. The law is very clear. We couldn't sell them because you cannot buy them by law. So if she's insinuating that we're selling arms, then, you know, take umbrage to that. We sell by the law, we have a license from the Sheriff's Department to transact the firearms, we have multiple licenses from the ATF. ATF comes and inspects us on a regular basis. The stuff on the wall is deceiving, she may have seen something, but she doesn't realize that a lot of these things have like magazines that are dummyed or that only, you know, that have ten-round capacity, but they're mounted permanently, and she's probably referring to some of the firearms that we sell to our law enforcement. You know, in this town, which, I moved to this town from Smithtown, I am a permanent resident here, I know the first day that she came up, she said, "We don't live anywhere." I live right off of Middle Road, very close. I moved, I moved here with pride. I opened this business with pride, I love the out east, I love being out east, I love all the hunters, the fishermen. Our clients are amazing. They patronize our place with pride, they, they're hunters, they, they always come in with their pictures, and they do use the Pecanic River frequently to, during waterfowl season, to hunt ducks, all the time. Because they always come and they talk about their, you know, what they've caught and this and that. So, as far as us, you know, we did this business not because to open up a gun store, I didn't want to open up a gun store, like a Darkstorm Industries, which you'll see on cable news. This is what we wanted to do, hunting, fishing, sportsman. And any guns that she didn't like the look of, the called black guns, a lot of people don't like them. But the law enforcement in this community, and this is a great police department, they are all customers of us, all the eastern departments, the small, great departments, and they have to buy their firearms somewhere. They don't get issued from the police department, so that's why we're here, we're filling, you know, the needs of the residents, the hunters, the sportsmen, and the law enforcement community.
Well, having spent nineteen sixty-eight in Vietnam, I'm well aware of M-16s and AK-47s and the sounds they make, so, thank God, somebody passed a smart bar, cancel. So let's...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
We're talking about selling guns, we're talking about repairing guns, you know, inciting and making customer alterations. What is the percentage between selling and your repaired stuff? How does that, can you, just an estimate?
Believe it or not, I mean, the, as far as like the gunsmith is concerned, and like as far as like the guns that we get, we have our, and if you wanted to come in, you could see, the proportion of rifles, hunting rifles, to our, like, you know, semi-automatic other guns, has got to be like eighty percent. It's, we sell mostly shotguns, and all, most of the hunting guns are semi-automatic. I mean, semi-automatic, because of the media, it sounds like a horrible term, but people, they, they either shoot with a bolt-action or a semi-automatic, even the, even in duck blinds, you know, they make, Mossberg makes tons of semi-automatic shotguns, that's what people prefer to use. So, the word semi-automatic sounds scary, but all, most of the hunting rifles are semi-automatic.
So what's the repair part of your business then?
The, the repair part of the business is, we, we do a lot of trading. Like, we prefer the trade, because we get to get, we, we're able to get some of the guns that were made many, many years ago, or out of people's collections that they've had for a long time, and they come in and, "Hey, I'm downsizing, I have, you know, fifty guns, my, my wife wants me to sell these guns," and they'll come in and we get some nice, very like nostalgic, really cool, you know, hunting firearms or any firearms. So when these guns come in, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Jones brings twenty guns in, you know, we need to know whether they function, I can't put them on the shelf and say, and sell them to you, not knowing, you know, what they do, if they function, if there's a broken extractor, you know, because if I sell a gun that's bad, then you're coming back the next day, or someone can get hurt, you know? And being a licensed gunsmith, I have to be careful in what I sell, it has to function, it has to be repaired properly, because I'm on the hook for it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else to be heard on this matter?
I don't have...
Madam, to the stairs. I'll leave.
I don't have internet service in here, so I can't go on to the website, but I am telling you, he, unfortunately, I did ask questions when I was there, I did, and, and I got answers, but I am telling you, this gentleman, who I did meet with, I have nothing against him personally, he did not answer your question, he did not list the types of weapons that I saw lined up against the wall. He just goes, "Well, they, they're semi-automatic weapons, no big deal." You know, big brouhaha. I study war. I'm interested in war, because I want war to end. And I'm telling you that these weapons in that store are not just duck weapons, they are not just semi-automatic rifles. They are, they are, he didn't identify them, he avoided your question.
Excuse me?
And that's the problem I'm having here.
He did say that he supplied weapons to the law enforcement agencies.
He did say that, but anyone could...
Those might be the weapons that you're looking at.
They were lined up against the wall for everyone to walk in to purchase. They sell to everyone, and even though law enforcement may be some of the people who purchase these weapons, they are not all of the people who purchase these weapons.
I'm looking at their website right now. They have a Mossberg, bolt-action, no, let me see, Remington. Oh, I'm trying to get the wrong button, no, there it is.
Yeah, I wish I could look at that.
Yeah, well, I'm watching, I'm looking at these things.
I was there.
But these are shotguns, for the most part here.
Yeah, these are not shotguns that I saw.
He also just stated, unless I heard him wrong, that they sell about eighty percent in hunting rifles or shotguns or whatever, so, I mean, I don't know what you saw on the store.
I don't see...
I saw what, what was on the wall, across the entire wall.
And I'm looking at them.
Well, that's on the website, too.
These firearms that he's supposedly selling.
Yeah, I...
Isn't he sanctioned by the Sheriff's Office and ATF? Or is he allowed to sell those guns?
I don't know the answer to that, because I don't see any evidence that he's permitted to do that.
What's that question here? Is this an accessory use to the main use? That's all we care about, we don't...
I understand, sir.
And I know you're concerned about the shooting range, but the shooting range, obviously the architect just showed you the plans, how it's supposed to work, I don't think any bullets will penetrate and go outside and hurt anybody.
I don't know that.
Well, we're looking at, we're looking at the documentation, it says...
You're going to have time to find that out.
Yes.
You're going to be given the opportunity to look into these issues, you could raise them if you'd like, in writing to us, and we'll make a determination.
Excuse me?
Leo, Leo, I'd like to have a vote tonight, and she can take her concerns to the plan.
Well, whatever you want to do, Charlie.
He's certainly not selling any illegal firearms.
You don't know that.
He's certainly not selling illegal firearms.
I, I honestly can't say what he's selling, I know what I saw on the wall.
I've just looked at the, I just looked at the website.
And the website might be scrubbed, I don't know.
All right. Anyone else to be heard on this matter?
And I'm not making that up.
Please step up.
I don't know if that's being fair.
I, I'm always fair. I don't have to cheat, never have.
Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so thank God. State your name, you were here last time.
Janet Pollak Cantor.
Go ahead.
My sister, with Pollak there. I'm surprised that more of the public isn't ready to stand up and ask these, ask these very important questions about this particular business that may be coming into the neighborhood. I would like to see more people stand up and speak about and ask these questions, not just us, it'd be good. And as a speech-language pathologist who's worked in the Riverhead School District for so many years and such close relationships with wonderful students, in today's climate, I'm just surprised that this type of business is even being considered, considered, even in such a small neighborhood. I don't see how this kind of business is good for the community, it doesn't cause growth in the community. If anything, I believe that it has, holds potential for difficulty at any way, at any rate. It is worth, worthy of closer scrutiny. Whatever's in the, in the business, in the store, in terms of firearms, should be looked at more closely, others should look into it, have a look, visit, and really see what's there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Yes, Mr. Sombuski?
I just wanted to add one quick item. One of the affidavits that Mr. Cuddy gave you was an affidavit from myself. I grew up in Polish Town on Lincoln Street, which, the end of which is all...
I know it well.
Very, very close to the Pecanic River, and I had a lot of friends along the Pecanic River. We shot at ducks off of the riverbank, actually just west of what used to be the Weeping Willow Motel. And in fact, people who live along the river can hunt from the riverbank on the Pecanic River. Basically, we're not here to ask for a waiver or to bring a business into a residential community. We are a use that is a commercial use in a commercial zone that is permitted by the zoning, and the range is clearly accessory there, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to state one thing, one thing for the record.
Just state your name real quick.
Thomas Newman, for Bates &amp; Barrows, is that we did attach the, the ATF alcohol tobacco firearms, we have a class zero-one firearms license that allows us to have, you know, the, the, all the firearms that we have on display, and just for the record again, we do sell to the police, police agencies, and the only people, and she might want to, I'm going to refer her to the SAFE Act, if you might want to read that tonight in its entirety. You cannot, you do? You cannot sell an assault weapon to, in, any other person than an active law enforcement, active law enforcement. On the east end, we have tons of different agencies, they're our best, friendliest, awesomest customers, and it's by the law, police officers are allowed to buy them, so whatever she's seeing, she's seeing firearms that are only permitted to be bought and possessed by active members of the law enforcement. I just want to say that for the record.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Let's have a reading. She can take it to the plan, I think that's more in line with things than what's going on here.
Do you want to read it that way? How, do you want to leave it open?
I'm ready to vote, so, I think...
Well, I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
I think you have to let her vent it out, you have to let her go through the process.
All right, so let's give it, let's give it ten days, and then we'll reserve the decision. Okay.
Well, then you have less issues with me, and, all right, I think that might be the law, the better, the better decision in the short term, so, you can just say that you see, you can...
I'm ready.
... when the judge can... when they're ready, when they're ready.
I haven't got my hearing aids yet. I'm trying to read your lips. You look like Clash Carco.
This is bullshit.
Easy.
Excuse me.
Easy.
I have M&amp;M's for you.
Have to be separated from my color.
Yeah, I do.
What's ten days for the next?
Today's the eighth.
Eight until eighteen, until eighteen.
You get all of these things here, all these approvals, and she can't believe it, how we know what works, no proof.
So, to reserve decision three? So, then read the whole thing, and then...
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, then read that, all that stuff.
I can maybe read all that.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. I moved at the appeal at thirteen fifteen West Main LLC. Tax number six hundred, one nineteen dash two dash thirty-eight, RFC zoning for interpretation of chapter three oh one, section one sixty-four C, where buildings for firearm testing and sighting is not customary accessory to a pre-existing non-conforming retail use, be held open for ten days for written comment, after which the hearing will be deemed closed on August nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. After which, the board will issue a written determination at its next meeting on August twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen.
So move.
All right. Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I wrote aye. So we'll have a decision, and we'll take any written comments for the next ten days.
October nineteenth. You're welcome.
All right, closely. Off you go.
Appeal two thousand nineteen zero one seven, Anna Cletus Galasso the third, do you have the affidavits and postings?
If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so thank God.
I'm an attorney.
Then you don't have to do that.
I know.
You might, raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so thank God. State your name and your address.
My name is Anna Cletus Galasso the third, I live at one eighty-one Landing Lane, Bating Hollow, New York.
You got stuck with the third, too, huh?
Yes.
Yes, young lady?
Hi, I'm Patricia Stern, one ten Lake Avenue South, Suite forty-six, Niskent, New York, one one seven four seven.
You have the floor.
Good evening, I'm here representing Vinland Commons LLC, which is the owner of the property that's presenting the subject application. Vinland is the owner of four buildings which are known as Country Commons, which is located on Route twenty-five in Aquabog. It was purchased by Vinland Commons in March of two thousand and one. At the time it was purchased, there were two buildings constructed on the premises, and the property was zoned by the town as BCR, which permitted retail use. Site plan approval from the planning...
So then read the whole thing and then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then read that all that stuff.
I can maybe read all that.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. I moved at the appeal of thirteen fifteen West Main LLC. Tax number six hundred one nineteen dash two dash thirty-eight RFC zoning for interpretation of chapter three oh one, section one sixty-four C, where buildings for firearm testing and sighting is not customary accessory to a pre-existing non-conforming retail use be held open for ten days for written comment, after which the hearing will be deemed closed on August nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, after which the board will issue a written determination at its next meeting on August twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen.
So move.
All right, Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I wrote aye. So we'll have a decision, and we'll take any written comments for the next ten days.
You're welcome.
All right, closely. Off you go.
Appeal two thousand nineteen zero one seven Anna Cletus Galasso the third. Do you have the affidavits and postings?
If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I'm an attorney.
Then you don't have to do that.
I know.
You might. Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. State your name and your address.
My name is Anna Cletus Galasso the third. I live at one eighty-one Landing Lane, Bating Hollow, New York.
You got stuck with the third, too, huh? Yes, young lady?
Hi, I'm Patricia Stern, one ten Lake Avenue South, Suite forty-six, Nisconton, New York, one one seven four seven.
You have the floor.
Good evening, I'm here representing Vinland Commons LLC, which is the owner of the property that's presenting the subject application. Vinland is the owner of four buildings which are known as Country Commons, which is located on Route twenty-five in Aquabog. It was purchased by Vinland Commons in March of two thousand and one. At the time it was purchased, there were two buildings constructed on the premises, and the property was zoned by the town as BCR, which permitted retail use. A site plan approval from the planning board was granted in nineteen eighty.
Eighty-seven.
Nineteen eighty-seven, which was specifically for retail and office complex. In CFOs were issued for Country Commons, the first two buildings in ninety-four and ninety-seven. The CFOs also stated it's for office and retail use. In two thousand and four, the town changed the code from BCR to RLC, which by its own definition is to allow a limited range of roadside shops and services compatible with the agricultural and rural settings along arterial roads such as Route twenty-five and indoor areas zoned hamlet center or village center. This new RLC zoning district applied to Country Commons. In two thousand and four, Vinland built two additional buildings in the rear of the complex and was issued certificates of compliance by the town in May of two thousand and five, which also designated the buildings as used for permit, a used permit for retail. The certificate of compliance was issued after the change of zone to RLC. Since two thousand and four, there have been numerous retail tenants at the various buildings. Many of these tenants are, were engaged in retail sales. In addition, even after the change to RLC zoning, the town continued to approve and issue special use permits for each of the tenants at Country Commons up until two thousand and fourteen. In September of two thousand and fourteen, Vinland made an application to the building department to put a convenience store in Building Two, which had a CFO for retail office uses. However, Jefferson Murphy, building and planning administrator for the building department, denied the application, claiming that the RLC zoning precluded use of Country Commons for retail purposes. The letter claimed that pursuant to the RLC code, only those retail stores or shops on properties with frontage along Route twenty-five between South Jamesport and Washington Avenue, which is one block, are permitted in the RLC district. South Jamesport and Washington Avenue is a very small set, section of Main Road, and Country Commons is not located in that area. The building department is now claiming that despite the lawfully issued CFOs which allow retail use, the only retail, the only uses that the building department will allow are antique stores and craft shops and non-retail uses such as agricultural production, nurseries, museums, libraries, schools, places of worship, parks and playgrounds, and single and two-family homes, which aren't applicable. Most, if not all, of these uses result in, would result in serious modifications to the existing building, or worse yet, the demolition of them, rendering the real property useless for all those purposes. Retail use is the only practical use for Country Commons as it is located on the main thoroughfare in Aquabog. Vinland would not have purchased the premises if it didn't have CFOs for retail and office uses. On March eighteenth, Vinland again filed an application for a special permit for retail use at the real property. On March twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, the chief building inspector denied the application, claiming the application did not comply with the RLC zoning because it was a proposed retail store outside of permitted area. That's the subject application before you. To the left and right of Country Commons are multiple retail uses such as True Value Hardware, East End Spas and Saunas, Barth's Pharmacy, but for some reason, Country Commons is not allowed to have either office space or retail per, permits issued to it. So that's the reason we're here before you. Since it was, since the CFOs were issued, there have been multiple retail and office uses in the building. And, let me see, what else? Actions of the town in not granting these permits and result in a de facto taking of Vinland's rights in the real property and the CFOs. Vinland was afforded no hearing prior to the de facto taking of these rights, and that's it. So we are here challenging that determination.
So when you say determination, are you referring to Mr. Hammond's letter?
No, I'm talking about Mr. Murphy's letter, which was issued in two thousand and nineteen.
Just recently?
Just recently, yes.
I don't think we have a copy of that, do we?
I have.
Do we have a copy of that?
I didn't see it.
It's a two packet. I haven't seen it, but I would like to see it. Unless I'm missing something.
No, the last one was Brad's.
The last one we have is Brad's.
So we have Brad Hammond back in March or May?
March of twenty nineteen. The application was filed in May.
Okay, so that being said, Mr. Hammond pointed out that it was not in
Right.
that particular zone between Washington and South Jamesport Avenue. What is Jefferson's argument? Because I don't have the, I don't have the, what, what, what factually did he deny you on?
He, he denied, let me see if I have it. He denied it for the same reason. He said that it was not located within that rural corridor.
Okay, so he kind of like redid the letter. Is that what you're basically saying?
Basically, yes. Basically, you know, since they've, since they've been filing the applications in two thousand and thirteen, they've either not accepted the application at all, the building department, or they've just denied it for the same reasons.
Do you have it?
It's not in the file.
It's not in here.
So we don't have that letter?
All right, I can get you a copy of it, but I have it.
To have it. So is it a very short written letter? Yes, she does. Oh, that would be great.
Oh, actually, I do have it. It's a little blurry, but.
So that technically is his denial letter?
Yes.
Basically, did you make an application seeking another use permit for retail space?
Yes, the second application was filed back in.
So you recently have filed a retail use permit?
Yes, they recently filed an application.
Yeah, and this winter or March.
Nineteen?
Nineteen.
And you filed for a retail use, and he denied you based on that?
Yes.
Saying you don't have any retail uses.
Right.
Okay. That, that would be helpful, to know that. Because part of the denial process is making the application to a use permit, so that you have a tenant lined up and you can put them in there, and then he denied you the use permit.
Right, that's it, well, he did. He applied for a use permit for retail. He had a tenant lined up for retail purposes, and he put in the application for that, and that's the reason he was denied. That's the subject application. With regard to the previous application, that was a whole court issue. They went to an Article seventy-eight. We were granted relief, and then the town appealed, and the appeal pended for about two, three years, and then on appeal, it was overturned. Right, because we didn't exhaust administrative remedies, which is why we're here before you. So we have an aerial photo of, of the, of the Route twenty-five, which shows that at the very edge of the rural corridor is Country Commons, and then there are several retail uses along Route twenty-five to the east, which would be Harbs Farms, Jamesport Country Store, East End Spas, and then right at the very corner, there's Jamesport True Value Hardware, which is actually to the left of Washington Avenue. It's not specifically in the corridor that allows it, but it's there anyway. So it seems that the only person that's not being, you know, and everything else is either vineyard, which is allowed, or residential, which is allowed. So it seems that the only person that's not being allowed that use is Country Commons.
So this, this letter I'm looking at from Jefferson is dated two thousand and fourteen?
Yes.
I thought you said nineteen?
No, no, this is the one that was the subject to first an Article seventy-eight proceeding.
This is what started the litigation?
Exactly.
Okay, now I got it. And so instead of going to the zoning board, you went straight to an Article seventy-eight against the administrator?
Yes.
Okay. So now you're back, you filed another use permit application?
Correct.
And now you're trying to get relief? How? I don't know if this is the mechanism or not, I'm not sure. That's up to legal counsel. There's other ways that may have to be looked at, I'm not sure. I don't know what you think, but we'd have to digest it for sure.
Well, yeah. The, the other determination wasn't made on the merits, it was a procedural determination. The original.
The original one was procedural, yes, because we actually had, had been successful on the merits, and then it was overturned based on the administrative.
Okay, so we should talk more about it with, with.
Yeah, I think we have to talk about it, yeah. I mean, always in my mind, I always thought, and this is just my personal opinion, that you built that shopping center and it was owned Village, whatever it was called.
Uh, BRC.
You vested in retail uses then, but that's just my thinking.
Right, there were retail uses when we bought.
Right, right.
Gangos Tile was operating.
Sure. And since the law changed and they, that kind of closed the door for you because they left that your section of the street.
Exactly.
So.
But it shouldn't have that, you know, it's a, he has a valid CFO, regardless of whether or not you changed the zoning, if he has a valid CFO, he's allowed to continue that use.
I don't know if he's had a certificate of occupancy or he had a use permit.
No, he has a certificate of occupancy that said, uh, retail use, at, at least for the front two properties. The back two properties, he has a certificate of compliance and a use permit.
Yeah, because I think initially the front buildings were built to the west, and then you built the other two later on?
No, the, the two in the front were built first, and then the two in the back were built later.
Subsequent, okay.
Subsequent, right.
But you don't have COs that say that. That they have retail use.
The front two CFOs say for retail use. The back two CFOs say certificate of compliance, and then there's a permit.
But there's, you know, how can you, on one piece of property, say these buildings are retail and these buildings can't?
I, I don't, I can't follow the logic either. I don't follow the logic either, but.
But that's our whole, that's our whole.
Some people think because they changed the zone, it became a non-conforming pre-existing use, and you weren't allowed to expand, or the use wasn't allowed anymore, because it clearly stated it in the other section, which is Washington and Jamesport. But there's ways to resolve this, I think. Yeah, these are the, these are the two buildings. Office retail, building number two.
Those are, that, that's the building in the front to the east, building two.
Two is in the front, east, yeah.
So when the town board did the site plan review in two thousand and three or four, they did your site plan, right, and they allowed you to build the other two buildings in the back?
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
So someone shaking their head back there, no?
All right, whoa, 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 we'll get to you.
I'm just curious. Okay. We'll, we'll listen.
Oh, yeah. But. Yeah, all four buildings are on the original site plan, and all the parking. And they were phased, yeah, all the parking was.
So if I look at the nineteen eighty-seven site plan, and I lay it out, there's four buildings on there?
Four buildings on, yeah.
Okay.
Because the parking was built for the four buildings.
I get it.
Do you need us to get you a copy of that site plan?
No.
Okay.
I don't need it, maybe the other members need it.
Okay, well, we'll get you one.
All right, let's hear what this young lady has to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you an attorney or a neighbor?
Uh, I'm a neighbor.
Then you're going to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Kindly state your name and your address.
Um, Marie Lebrun, ten eighty-six Main Road, Aquabog, New York.
Are you to the west of the property?
I'm to the west of the property, yes.
And we had a problem with trees a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken?
Um, problem was trees yesterday, cut the trees and things like that.
Pull that, excuse me, pull that mic down a little bit.
Sorry. Yes, there, there were some things, but they had been resolved. They put a sidewalk right next to our fence, and that's not allowed. You have to have a buffer, things were corrected, but we, you know, we had to come to many meetings, and it eventually got more corrected, yes.
Yeah, we remember.
I think you got a variance for that, didn't you?
Yes.
For the buffer? For the buffer?
We fixed whatever.
Yes, that's, I'm, I'm agree.
She wanted fixed.
Well, it wasn't just, it's just, it's the law, you know, I, I, I wouldn't be able, you know, to affect these things.
All right, now what's your problem now?
Oh, okay, um, yes.
Speak into the mic, Phil, please.
Give one to the one, please, and the rest of us can share.
Yeah, we'll share.
This also contains the, of, the appeal, the town appealed the case, and it did say that, that it, the petitioner did not establish that the building department's determination was wholly beyond its grant of power. And also the administrative remedies would cause the petitioner irreparable injury. They have been able to rent quite a few other places. In the back, I was told by someone who had seen it, who was interested in renting it, that the ceilings were too low, and that's maybe a problem. They have a second floor, and it seems crazy to have put a second floor just for the mechanicals with windows. But besides that, we would like the rural corridor zoning to be maintained. Part of the property borders the Vinland Commons, as we do. We border the Vinning Commons, we have agricultural protection. They have rural corridor, just because part of their property borders the Palmonoff Vineyard. So I would like this to be maintained. There's, there's very good reasons for the preservation of the rural corridor. If you put in a convenience store at this location, this causes a problem. We have gone all throughout the town of Aquabog and Jamesport, and we had many different petitions that have been signed and submitted to different boards, to the town board. So the town board decided to, to fight this application for, for the retail use, and they, they finally succeeded. So I think this is important. Town spent a lot of money and a lot of time. We didn't ask for it, we didn't even know what was going on. People in the neighborhood didn't know until after the fir, they won the first case. We only heard about it when we came here, they said, well, we're already doing the appeal. So we said, well, wait. Then, then we just found out in twenty eighteen that they had won the case. So we would like this to be maintained, the rural corridor. This is very important for the unique rural character, that that is what brings people to this area, is this wonderful, you know, look to it. We don't want convenience stores, they wouldn't be popular. The Glass Greenhouse put in some type of shop, and the neighborhood didn't support it. The, um, part of this, um, petitions that we did, people said they wouldn't support this. They like the little delis, they like the things, they don't want to have a convenience store which brings in cheap food, candy, alcohol. And alcohol is another problem because they have children, they have a preschool there. They also have dance school, they also have the karate. Lots of children running all over the parking lot and so on. It's not a good place for people zooming in for a cup of coffee or picking up a six-pack. Not a great place. And I think that would discourage the existing tenants. But why would you want to renew when you have too, too much traffic there? And also, if you know the big, the curve in the road, and then Tut Hill, if they were to put a, a traffic light there, people coming around the curve would smash into people. You know, it's, it's a, it's a dangerous curve. So I think that environmental impact study, and also a traffic study of what would happen if something like that happened. But it's up to you, and I respect your decision, thank you.
I, I just wanted to say before anyone got up, got up to talk about seven eleven. Seven eleven is long gone, they're no longer interested in this space. They've moved on to greener pastures because they were no longer willing to wait. So we're not here looking to get approval for a seven eleven. We're just looking to use this space for regular retail office space. If we were to try and put in a seven eleven, that would be a separate application, and then everybody could, you know, come in and give in their thoughts on that. But there's no seven eleven, so we're not here, here asking for a convenience store at this time. So just in case anyone else wants to come up.
Kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Kylie, state your name and your address.
My name is William Charles Van Helman, I'm the current president of the Greater Jamesport Civic Association. Good evening, nice, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. Um, we just recently heard about this, um, application and seeing that we're not talking about seven eleven, I got nothing to talk about. Uh, we would not be in favor of a seven eleven, I know the hoopla was a, a big problem in the past. Um, what I do want to say, uh, just for record, as we're all learning about what they're trying to bring, uh, out and forward is we want them to be successful at this property, um, because everybody being successful, you know, wins. But we need to create a, um, a unity with our neighbors and we would like to work with you and helping you along with this process where, where we're all involved in the project because it affects all of us, all right? Uh, so I'm not gonna really say too much, I have exchanged numbers and spoke with, uh, John and, uh, Mr. Glosso and, uh, I will hopefully have an appointment with them and their attorney and maybe we can hash out some details and, uh, try to obtain some support. But, uh, the Aquabob, Jamesport and, uh, western portions of Laurel, um, are in our vicinity and, and we're concerned. We do want to maintain, and I, I want to emphasize this, our rural character, you know? And the buildings that are on this site are very rural looking campus style, uh, we like that. We don't want brick and mortar, big buildings. Uh, we were recently involved in Sharper Hill, uh, where we were able to preserve that with our county legislature. Previous presidents prior to me worked diligently with previous boards, et cetera. That could have been a piece of Route fifty eight, right smack between Washington and South Jamesport Avenue. Fortunately, we were able to get that preserved and saved. So we would like to assist in this project and we are currently, uh, my group is working across the street uh, with an Evelyn Alexander Group, uh, who's doing a wildlife refuge directly across the street from your facility. So, uh, we would like to work with you also, that's all I want to put on the record for right now. Um, and we will be assisting in any way that we possibly can, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else here? And if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help the God.
Certainly do, my name is Jones.
Just pull that microphone down a little bit.
Yes, my name is Jones Zineski and I reside at fifteen North Apollo Drive in Aquabob. My reason for being here this evening is to try and bring to your attention, if you didn't already know, that a battle has been ensuing, uh, about the development of retail properties on, at this Vinland Commons site, okay? I do not wish to discuss anything involving country commons or whatever the previous name was for this development because I don't know anything about it. However, I do know about Vinland Commons and I do know that many, many, uh, permits were issued for, uh, uses that were not permitted, et cetera. Why they were issued and how they were issued is not for me to determine, I'm merely telling you that they were. And the employee who issued them is no longer in the employ of, uh, the town of Riverhead. Anyway, back to this, uh, this deal. I would continue to be somewhat suspicious about what exactly is planned by, uh, the owner of Vinland Commons uh, as far as his need to develop retail shops there. It seems to me that there are retail shops there already, not convenience stores, but retail shops.
Just about the use, the buildings are there already.
Uh, take a step back, sir. The buildings may be there, but the use of the buildings is still in question, okay?
Right, that's what's at issue.
All right, that's it. So basically, what would have to happen here in order for those buildings and their occupants, the businesses there to be legitimized is that the zoning would have to be changed. Because rural corridor zoning does not permit this, simple as that, even though those businesses continue to operate there and they're retail businesses. Okay? You may dance around the notion of what retail means, but I could tell you that, for instance, the Bliss Beauty Shop, they don't only do hair there. They, they call themselves a professional organization because their, uh, operators have to be licensed. But the, uh, owner of that business may not have to be licensed. So how is it a professional organization? Beats me. Anyway, I don't want to split hairs, but, uh, a lot of things have happened there whereby the actual letter of the law concerning what was to be allowed there has not been followed. So my only concern here is because of all this business that's happened in the past, I wonder, based on what I've been able to ascertain, uh, about this particular hearing, is that there is another organization involved in this. I don't know if this, uh, attorney here is part of that organization or what law firm she's with. I don't recall her having mentioned that. But there is another organization who has actually written a letter to you people and they are called, or they call themselves, uh, uh, A M P M Business Services. Now who the heck are they?
I don't know, who are they?
Who are they?
You're asking us, I'm asking you, who are they?
I don't know who they are, they wrote a letter to you. Expedators. Okay.
She's a local girl.
She's a local girl?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
She did the processing, just paperwork kind of stuff.
Uh-huh, okay, fine.
She's not a legal representative.
Fine, very good. Now, with, what law firm are you associated, ma'am, the attorney? I don't believe I heard what you said. Excuse me?
I'm not gonna call it across.
You're not going to call it what? I can't hear what you're saying, ma'am.
Ma'am, she can't call out across.
Oh, okay.
She has to go to the microphone.
She has to go to the microphone to answer your question.
All right, thank you, I just didn't understand that you said the word across. So basically, uh, this has been going on and on and on and on forever. So possibly the solution is to either enforce the rural corridor zoning language as it exists today or make many, many people residents, et cetera, in the, uh, Aquabob community and Jamesport community terribly unhappy with, uh, decision to change it from rural corridor to Hamlet Center or something else, which would permit the owner to do just about what he wants. And where does that leave the rest of us? We're the taxpayers.
That's why we have these hearings.
Fine.
Collecting information.
It's fine, so.
We heard you.
You hear me, you hear what I've said? I mean, I've been a resident of this community for the past twenty years. My family were, uh, Polish immigrants who were potato farmers here since the early nineteen hundreds, so I am not a stranger or a newcomer. And I know a lot about what goes on here and I would very much like to urge you to do the right thing for us in this community, because we live here. I thank you very much for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Taking the time to listen to me and we will remember explicitly how you have decided this, okay?
Well, I would hope so.
And even though you, even though you are not elected officials, you are appointed, we will remember, thank you.
Thank you for your endorsement.
Anyone else we heard? You wanna get, get up and give your, uh.
My clothes.
Your, your, yes.
So I, I just want to point out that all the uses that are at, you know, uh, Vinland Commons has always made sure that the uses that are there have permits. Every use that's in this, in the Commons right now has a valid permit. The hair salon that she's talking about has been there since two thousand and eight, there's been no issue with regard to the hair salon. Um, the other uses that are there, there's a, I think a martial arts studio, there's an insurance broker, there's, um, a financial advisor, these are all, you know, very quiet, friendly, neighborly uses. There's nothing crazy going on in the Commons. Um, with regard to the law firm that I work for, it's Shire and Stern LLC. Richard Shire has represented Vinland Commons for, or did represent Vinland Commons for, you know, fifteen years and I am lucky enough to have worked with him and taken over the representation. So I don't represent anyone else other than Vinland Commons. And that's it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
They would like to try to say that, but they haven't said it. To amend the applications to do it right. It's that silly language that they put in there that says, Brad, all he did was underline Washington and South Jamesport Avenue. So they have the same zoning as Len's Pizza, but they were excluded because of the road. Absolutely was built in eighteen seventy with an approved. The issue is, was there a vesting?
Right.
That's what should be the question. Please bring her up.
Counsel?
Can we just, I just have a couple of questions. I looked at the application, I just wanted to clarify, is the applicant requesting that the zoning board determine that because the shopping center was built under a prior zoning use that permitted retail and that established the use by getting certificates of occupancy in the different units within the, the complex, that they vested in that retail use under the prior zoning and that although the R L C zoning that's now applied doesn't permit retail other than outside of a particular area, that the vesting would be, create a preexisting nonconforming scenario? Is that the argument?
Um, that, that, I guess that is the argument, um, yes, I guess that is the argument.
Okay, because just like if you owned a house, like a residence, and the town changed the zoning on your house, you would be able to sell it and still be able to use it as a house, even if the town changed the zoning and didn't allow houses. And that happens a lot.
Right.
I just want to make sure we understood what the argument was.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, anyone else?
Anyone else we heard on this matter? It's a pleasure.
I wish to, uh, adjourn appeal number nineteen dash seventeen for the next meeting on August twenty second, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Mr. Seebrook.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
And I vote aye. We'll see you on the twenty second. Off, off you go.
Mr. Chairman.
All right.
What the hell, where are you going? He's abandoning us.
All right, we're gonna give a, give him a break here. All right, we're gonna give it, give him a break here. Okay, we're back on, so go ahead Clarissa.
Okay, next appeal is two thousand nineteen zero three six, Robert Anthony Caputo, five thirty-three Center Street, Jamesport, tax map number six hundred ninety-two three twenty, RB forty zoning, variances end over relief from chapter two seventeen, section six M four, where second electrical service installed on detached accessory garage is not permitted. Chapter three oh one, section fourteen C, where proposed habitable space in detached structure deemed not to be a customary accessory use to the principal's single-family use and is not permitted. Section two twenty-two E, where proposed additions increase gross floor area within required rear yard abutting a side street line representing a degree, an increase in degree of non-conformity of a pre-existing non-conforming accessory structure which is not permitted. And section seventeen, where proposed additions increase impervious surface coverage to twenty-two point two percent and maximum permitted is fifteen percent.
If you can only raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
State your name and your address.
My name is Anthony Portillo, I'm the architect, our address is one five four zero zero Main Road, Manitouck, New York, one one nine five two.
You have the floor.
I'll start by saying, I have to apologize for my client, he decided to build an addition on his garage prior to me knowing him or anybody else, so this, this garage is built. And at the time I was hired, I explained to him all the wrong things that he did, I think he understands, they do currently have a stop work order on the property, and I did not know the, the client at the time, and after I met him, this is where we are. So, the existing property has a garage that fronts West Street and South Jamesport, the property's not common, I guess, there's, there's basically two streets and then two side yards, so the rear yard is on a street where he currently had his existing garage, which was existing non-conforming, and he added a fourteen foot eleven inch addition to the rear of it, so he did not necessarily increase non-conformity towards the rear yard, but increased it because of the setback situation from the rear yard. The total structure is now thirty-three feet long, and that is, one of the reliefs that we're requesting is on the addition of the non-conforming garage. The other relief is the, um, the addition increased the lot coverage of the property. Again, on the opinion of the garage was a bit small to begin with, I think that, you know, if he did it the proper way and took the proper channels, it might have made more sense to the board and to others that, you know, the garage needed to be a little bit larger to fit a car and other, other activities that you might utilize in the garage. The second floor, our request is for a unheated area, he would like to finish it, but he obviously isn't running any heat, so in the sense of an accessory use, it's not necessarily an accessory use, but, but that's what the, what the use will be, is basically just a, you know, a place to store and things like that, is what I, what I understand.
And you drew the plan?
Yes, sir. I drew the, the as-built plans after the fact.
Okay.
The, the garage is built with no plans, basically, so there are some small changes that are gonna be required due to the historical board, which I've been in discussion with them, and they are asking the owner to, uh, re-adapt the building to what their standards are for that area in regards to the aesthetics of the exterior. I, I don't have approval because I have to be here first, but I did have conversations with the board and the, the design is, is within their, their aesthetic.
Existing garage, sir.
Yes.
Does that have an attic or space above it?
It was a, it was a small storage, it was a, a pull-down to get up there, he does have a staircase in this proposed design.
And what's gonna be up there?
We're not proposing any plumbing, I, there is a sub-panel, so there's electric in the garage, there was existing electric in the garage, so I don't, we're not requesting to add electric, he'll increase the electric, obviously, because of the size of the space, but it would be unheated, but finished is what our request is for the relief.
I'm sorry, so what are you using that second floor for?
I don't, the, he doesn't really have a use, he's told me maybe like a, a office or like a studio, you know, kind of like a place to put a pool table, that type of, that type of use.
And what does he do for a living?
Uh, he is a, he is not a, he's not a perm, he's not a year-round resident, he lives in the city, I think he's, does something with banking or something finances.
So, what would, do you office or studio, would you off?
I guess that when he's out here, that would be where he would go to, to work. But he, you know, it'd be, I'd say like a man cave situation is how I think he wants to use it, but it's, it's, he only uses the residence in the summertime, so there wouldn't be any heating or anything like that.
Okay, so, let's see, if he's, well, let's face it, we went and looked at it.
Mm-hmm.
We saw the sliding door upstairs or the
With the balcony.
The balcony's gonna be built and we have a separate entrance.
Mm-hmm.
You're asking to have a second meter, obviously it's gonna be used for residential purposes, not for storage.
Uh, and I, I, I guess, I meant, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say storage, but also, he will be, his plan is to use it as an office or a pool table, I think that's kinda his idea.
Why would he need a second meter then?
Where he would go up there, that's a good question, sir.
Didn't you say there was a second meter there already?
No, no, not a meter, there's a sub-panel for the garage.
They won't allow it. Okay. So, if I, if I read the code right.
Yes.
Two-family is allowed in South Jamesport. But I believe it has to be in the same structure.
Yeah, I believe you're correct.
So, you're creating two separate occupancies, and I don't know if there's septic systems that were put in, they're planned to be put in, is there a health department involved? Will there be a bathroom?
We're not, we're not requi-
Is there a bathroom facility?
We're not requesting a bathroom.
Not today?
I, I honestly, I, so I'll, I'll be, just so you guys understand my relationship, the, the owner, I haven't actually even spoken much to him besides on the phone, I'm dealing with the builder, and my understanding is that that's what this is, that's what he wants to use this
Is the owner here?
Attic space, no, just me.
How about the builder, who's the builder?
Joe Ross.
So, why would Joe Ross, being a builder?
Again, I'm
Take it on, without a building permit.
That's why my, that's why my first statement to you guys was I was not involved in that portion of it, so, I, I can't answer those types of questions.
When you're dealing with zoning like this, the way to remedy it is to make an application, and you did that.
Right.
And the way the building inspector slash administrator, whoever it was, they saw that the things you're looking to do don't conform to the code, so they sent you here.
Right, I understand.
So, so now we're looking at something that's a proposed second story, storage, we know that's not gonna be storage with a balcony. Okay, 'cause we can make them take the stairs out, have them pull downstairs, we can do all sorts of fun things.
Sure, I mean, I would
The meter, I don't think we need a second meter.
My recommendation possibly would be that we leave it as
Leave the sub-panel.
Un-heated, unfinished, and that would be what you guys would allow, you know, which is, which is probably what I would have recommended, that maybe we could have it finished and unheated and not a panel, you know, I mean, sorry, not an, another meter, but obviously we would, you know, that would have been at the time.
You know, I can, I can understand people in the community, they look at these things and they see other people doing it.
Correct.
There are channels to follow, to get it legalized.
Hundred percent.
And we know where he headed with this, so I'll let you finish your presentation.
Basically, that's, that's about it, sir, I mean, uh
So, this is a summer home for him?
Yes, sir.
He lives in Fairfield, Connecticut?
Yes, sir.
And he's not here?
No, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else here on this matter?
I, I, I guess one other thing, just wanna state one thing, if we were to rewind the clock and say he didn't build the structure, I do think that the increase of the garage space, the square footage, made that a more usable garage, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with anybody on the board saying that the top floor is probably not as necessary, unfortunately because of the condition of the site and, and where that existing garage was, the sensible thing would be to build out the back to enlarge the garage, so, in that sense, I would, I would ask that the board just sort of consider that in regards to, um, the notion that if we were, if we were here before anything was built, you know, I think that everyone would agree that what was increased in regards to the garage is sensible and in the right location since that's where the existing garage was. In regards to the overall design, you know, I don't know if I agree with it or not, but the fact is, is I think the way that, the way that the garage was approached to and be enlarged is, it made sense, and it wasn't, it wasn't extended to the sides or anything, it was just shaped out like a rectangle, which I think is a sensible design approach.
You have to make it have a little space upstairs so you don't hit your head.
Right, well, again, I mean, the garage was like eighteen feet deep, you know, so
Would you wanna see the owner?
No, I wanna deny it.
Yeah, I'm
I'm ready.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else here on this matter? No, all right, let's have a reading.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal of Robert Anthony Caputo of five thirty-three Center Street, in the RB forty zoning for variances relief from chapter two seventeen, six M four, where the second electrical service installed on detached accessory garage is not permitted, section and chapter three oh one, section fourteen C, where the proposed habitable space is detached structure deemed not to be customary accessory use to the principal's single-family use and is not permitted, section two 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 E, where the proposed additions increase gross floor area within required rear yard abutting a rear street line representing an increase in degree of non-conformity of a pre-existing non-conforming accessory structure which is not permitted, and section seventeen, where the proposed additions increase impervious surface lot coverage of twenty-two point two percent and the maximum permitted is fifteen percent, be denied, in accordance with the application sketches and amendments there too filed with the building inspector.
Second.
All right, Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. uh, Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so your appeal has been denied.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Could we come back to the board requesting the garage, like, the garage at that size, but we would look at how we deal with the second floor, if, if we were to make it a
You gotta make an application to the building permit.
Correct, no, I'm just, I mean, we could come back to ask for the size of the, uh
Yeah, you can come back for anything.
Right, okay.
But you have to file a new application and re-file with the building inspector, 'cause this, this permit is done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Clarissa, off you go.
Appeal number two thousand nineteen zero three one, Scott Markert, seventeen fifty-six Edwards Avenue, Banning Hollow, tax map number six hundred thirty-nine two fifty-point-two, RB forty zoning, variances end over relief from chapter three oh one, section eight C, where proposed habitable space is detached structure deemed not to be customary accessory use to the principal's single-family use which is not permitted, and section eleven, where proposed accessories setback to side street line are ten feet and thirty-five point seven five feet and minimum allowed is fifty feet.
And if you can only raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
You got it.
My name is
Name and address.
My name is Robert Stromsky, I reside in forty-four Circle Drive, Jamesport, New York. I am acting as the architect representative for the project, the property owner, Mr. Scott Markert is present here, so if there are any questions to the owner, we could, we could look at them. What you see before you is an application for a detached garage structure, the property has a unique contour situation being that the property has a grade elevation change from Edwards Avenue up to where the house and where the proposed detached garage is. We have a situation where the detached garage portion, where the lower level would be mostly hidden by the current grade, and the proposed second story that we're proposing is the only portion that would be seen for the majority of the volume, the only two-story element would be the wall that faces Edwards Avenue. We do have some pictures of structures in the area that do have detached structures with similar type of volume, second floor spaces above within the area to go along with our assessment, but we feel this is not something that's out of character for the neighborhood and the community. Mr. Markert, his purpose for the second story is that he has a growing family and the fact that he has children with grandchildren, and he just loves to, to be able to give the, his family the ability to come, visit the property with him and have a place to stay, that's why you had seen in the proposed plans, we are looking to propose two bedrooms, a bathroom in a small living area above the garage. The garage size footprint is predicated in the fact that Mr. Markert would like to house his boat and trailer within the garage, that's why the boat, the lower level, we have the room to actually house the boat and trailer inside the structure, so it's not something that's gonna be on the property, visible, if you would like, I could send, I could bring up pictures of similar structures in the neighborhood, just
We know the neighborhood very well, I do, I think everybody else does, if you want it for the record, I guess we should take it.
Yep.
Take the pictures.
Yeah. How big is the boat?
I believe the, the boat itself from the hitch to the back, I believe is about twenty, twenty-three, twenty, it's a twenty-three foot boat, so with the trailer, you're looking at about twenty-eight feet, that's why we've, we've come up with the, the size that we did, just so that you could fit the, the trailer with the hitch and so forth, and have ability to move around it. We tried to design the structure kind of similar to what you see here, is where the second story is pretty much a large gable that has dormers that basically make the volume, so we're trying to limit the volume exposure to, to the surrounding areas, basically be in character to, similar to the pictures I've showed you, to be of a cottage style, not something that's just very large, so we were, you know, sympathetic to the, the type of volume space that we were creating.
How would you get from the garage to the top? I mean, is there a lift there or?
Uh, no, we actually have an interior stair.
No, no, from, if you wanted to get up to the house now.
There's an interior stair from the garage that you would go up, and then from that level there are steps to grade, so you would have to go up.
That's a pretty steep, wow.
Uh, I mean, this, the stair slope that we have, if you look at the floor plan, it's a pretty large run for the stair, it's less than twelve feet, so we don't have to have, but that stair would be of a normal stair that you would see in a residence, it's not something that would be cumbersome, but again, this is pretty much a garage that's primarily used for the storage of the boat and some recreational activities, he does have a garage that's part of the, the residence where he has his vehicles, that would be used more on a daily basis, so the premise was not to be concerned about getting from the garage to the main residence, it was really just to be able to store the recreation vehicles when they're not in the water, which is the winter time, so. I don't know if the board has any questions about the project.
Anybody?
No.
Well, the good news is you didn't start it yet.
Uh, the plate, the, the placement of the garage, uh, the placement of the garage, we, we tried to keep it at least ten feet off, you know, the property line from where it was, just because of the development of the property, telephone poles that are on Edwards Avenue, we kinda, kinda locked it to a certain spot, so.
That is a tight road. I know.
Right.
It's just tight, so you know the area. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And I would highly recommend fixing that stair, well, staircase going up from Edwards Avenue. 'Cause I walked up it.
He was limping the whole time.
And then I walked down it, no, I visited the property today.
Then we had to call the police to find it. He was laying I built that myself, you know.
I, you know what, I could believe that.
He was laying, uh, he was laying on the side of the stair.
Rob, how are we doing on the septic system?
Uh, we haven't filed anything for the health department because we wanted to come here for that.
Do you have two bedrooms in this house?
Excuse me?
How many bedrooms are in the current house?
I think there's three in the current.
Yeah, you'll probably have to upgrade now.
Uh, we're gonna have to definitely upgrade, our, our position is more than likely we're gonna be doing a, a separate sanitary system for this structure, and then the house, but obviously, once you go in front of the uh, Suffolk County Department of Health, you have to, uh, meet, the entire property has to meet current standards, so.
So-
That is a discussion I've had with the owner, that, that is another application we will have to do, pending the decisions we have here.
I can't find existing, uh, in our-
You have to get, you know, just-
No, it's, 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 it's maxed out, but, um, I think I would suggest to our fellow, my fellow members that we would put a condition on it, if we're, if we wanna prove it. That no kitchen be put in this and used as a separate residence, only for his personal family use.
Okay, let's follow.
Then I would have no problem with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else be heard from the audience? I guess not. All right, let's have that written up.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move at the appeal of Scott Markert, seventeen fifty-six Edwards Avenue, Bating Hollow, um, for variances under relief from chapter three oh one, section eight C, where proposed habitable space in detached structure deemed not to be customary accessory used to the principal single-family use, which is not permitted. And section eleven, where proposed accessory setbacks to side street line are ten feet and thirty-five point seven five feet, and minimum allowed is fifty feet. Uh, be approved with the condition that there will be no kitchen, uh, or separate, um, residence, in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
So.
Sex.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin, I give my okay too, but get that stairwell fixed, get somebody who knows what they're doing, you almost killed me there today, and I would've been a no vote. Now you know, all right, thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Rita.
Thank you very much.
Good night, now. Well, counsel, let's have a reading.
Appeal twenty nineteen zero three two, J. Petroselli Development Associates, four twenty East Main Street, Riverhead, tax map number six hundred one twenty-nine three twelve, DC one zoning, and six hundred one twenty-nine three fourteen, DC five zoning. For variances under relief from chapter three oh one, section one fifty-eight A, unparcel described as tax map six hundred one twenty-nine three fourteen. Where proposed impervious surface is eighty-five point six percent, and maximum permitted is sixty percent. And section two fifty-nine D two, where lighting encroachment is zero point one-three foot candles to the west, and zero point one-four foot candles to the east, on adjacent properties, and maximum permitted is zero point one foot candles. Whereas luminaires on commercially used properties shall be located and shielded in a manner to prevent light projection beyond the property line.
Counsel, you have the floor, please have your name and-
Before you start, Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna give myself some advice, and have a great night, everybody.
That's a cop, man.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Eric Russo, I'm with the law firm of Amber and Jeswiak and Russo. With offices at one forty Main Street, Sable, New York, on behalf of the applicant J. Petroselli Development Associates, one hundred Comex Street, Ronkonkoma, New York. They are the property owners as well of the property, under J. Petroselli Development Associates as of May, November fifteen of seventeen, and Ostrander Property LLC as of May fourth of sixteen. As stated in the call, the property is situated at four twenty East Main Street in Riverhead, and also fronts on one seventeen to one twenty-three Ostrander Avenue as well. It's on the northeast corner of Main, seventy-three feet west of Ostrander Avenue, and on the west side of Ostrander Avenue, hundred seventy-five point six one feet north of East Main Street. It's two tax lots, as stated, the property area is twenty-four thousand four seventeen square feet, and it has split zone of DC one district as well as DC five. There is no prior applications regarding this particular, uh, two parcels ever before the board, the properties are single and separately owned, although they are joined as part of the proposal. And as stated by Ms. Collins, the variance relief relates to impervious surface area of eighty-five point six, where sixty percent is permitted. And there are lighting encroachments as it relates to the east and to the west, where the maximum is point one. There are various, um, town documents and records regarding the property, letters in lieu going back to October of eighty, and then going forward from there as it relates to the pre-existing uses of the structures on both parcels, reconstruction due to fire, demolition of garage, of residence, of doctor's office, of sheds, as well as building permits. The particular property in question is going to be used in tandem with the Preston House Restaurant and Hotel. I provided you with a document binder, which shows forty-five photographs of the subject premises and the area in surrounding to it, which shows that the area residence, uh, the area is a mix of residences, commercial uses, and parking in DC one, DC five, DC three zoning, on the north, the south, the east, and the west. I affirm and aver all of my statements on our application that we put before you this evening, and I'm just gonna put forward here that the application has been moving along. Um, we filed this application with the town board for a special permit and site plan, because they have jurisdiction based on the historic district in the downtown zoning. We've gotten landmark preservation commission approval as of July eleventh of this year, Riverhead Town Architectural Review Board approval as of July twenty-third. The town board is the lead agency as of May twenty-second of this year, and the town board approved, so that you could expeditiously approve this application, a secret determination as of August sixth of nineteen, should you find that the relief being requested is meritorious. That being said, it's a third of a mile west of Riverhead Town Hall, and I know you know where this is located. And to review the requirements of two sixty-seven B under variance relief, there is no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. As the parking, impervious parking being proposed is going to provide for additional hotel rooms and spa services for this facility, and in conjunction with the hotel and restaurant. Um, as far as the lighting is concerned, it is not going to, although it may slightly spill over, it spills over to the side on the municipal parking area. So as a result of that, it is prudent to allow for safety of the public and pedestrians who are in the municipal lot, as well as who may be walking through the area of this particular parking lot. The relief, in our opinion, is not substantial, because as far as the impervious service is concerned, we are allowing for additional parking. And we are, in addition to that, covering the drainage and grading, so that there is no environmental or topographical issues as relates to it. Um, as far as the lighting is concerned, again, I point back to the fact that it's a safety issue, and it's LED lighting, it will be downlit. I provided you with a photograph, because there have been building permits allowed for some of the activities on site, that show you the lighting will be similar to what is there in the downtown area, and there's a photograph in that. That being said, it's not a self-created issue, we're trying to comply and provide the necessary relief, so that we have the proper parking and drainage and lighting for tandem uses. If you have any other questions, I believe, in my opinion, the relief we are seeking is the minimum necessary, and yet allow us to proceed with the application. I have nothing further unless you have questions other than me. And your approval would be appreciated.
Beautiful.
Mr. Russo, everything's very concise, we even have a letter from the Penguin, Penguin family across the street, with their approval, so.
And Sammy the Seal.
Sammy the Seal, too. So I don't think we'll have a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Doesn't seem to be anybody on the orders, in objection of this?
No, but I was enjoying listening to you all this evening, and the varied application.
There be no weapons involved at this?
There are no weapons involved with this, and the only weapon, the only weapon we would have on site is in the, uh, northeast corner of the parking lot, there are presently bee cages, or bee, staffs of bees, where they create the bee that they use in the restaurant, and, uh, I believe those are gonna be removed.
Those are a bunch of bees.
Okay.
Otherwise, there is nothing further I have to offer.
As long as they're friendly bees, we're not-
In other words, the ship's going-
Unless you have a couple of, uh, elected officials or other residents that you need them to be directed toward, um, I have nothing further to offer.
Can we give you a list?
All right, let's have a reading.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that appeal nineteen dash thirty-two, which is J. Petroselli Development Associates, four twenty East Main Street. And the DC one zoning, for variances and relief from chapter three oh one, one fifty-eight A, unparcel described as Suffolk County Tax Map Member, six hundred one twenty-nine dash three dash fourteen. Where proposed impervious surface is eighty-five point six percent, and the maximum permitted is sixty. And section two fifty-nine D dash two, where the lighting encroachment is point one-three foot candles to the west, and point one-four foot candles to the east on adjacent properties, and the maximum permitted is one point one, excuse me, foot candles. Whereas luminaries on commercially used properties shall be located and shielded in the manner to prevent light projection beyond the property line. Be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so your appeal has been approved, in about two weeks from now, all the paperwork should be done, thank you for your-
Patience.
Your patience, yes, thank you for your concise and well-organized appeal, and thank you to Mr. Petroselli for cleaning up another IC. That's been that way for many years.
I will share your, uh, thoughts with him, and I thank you again for your time, spending time with you this evening, as well as Ms. Thomas and Ms. Collins, you have excellent counsel this day.
Oh, we do have that, thank God.
Have a good evening.
You too, thank you, Mr. Russo. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor.
Aye.
Do I hear a motion?
I would like to make a motion to close the meeting.
All in favor.
Aye.
I can't move, I go by.
Aye, 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 aye.